Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for March 16th, 2020. For those of you who are tuning in from home and may want to follow along with our agenda, you can find it at our website, lavonypublicschools.org. You can highlight over the Board tab and on the right you'll find Board information. And if you left click on there, down on the left you'll see meeting agendas and you can follow along. For anyone in the audience, and we're sparse tonight, you can go outside of the door to the left and if you go to the right, there's a table that has our agendas as well as our blue slips for audience communication if anyone wants to address the Board. The Committee of the Whole meeting is a meeting where you'll hear more in-depth discussion on the items that are brought before the Board for discussion. These items have most likely been brought at least once and perhaps multiple times at our study sessions and when the Board agrees that they can move on, they will come to the Committee of the Whole for further discussion, then they move on to our voting meeting when the Board feels they're ready to be voted on. So if you tuned in to see a lot of Board discussion, this is the one that you want to tune into. So we'll get going with Item One, our Audience Communication. I do not have any blue slips and I do not see anyone in the audience approaching, so we'll move on to Item Two, our Committee of the Whole. I don't believe that we have much, but I will turn it over to Superintendent Oquist.
Thank you, President Johnson. I was hoping I could just give an update on some current happenings in our district and how our district is responding to the government closure.
Okay.
So certainly, one of the things we want to do is acknowledge the unique circumstances in which we find ourselves, not only in Livonia Public Schools, but in every school district across the state of Michigan, indeed in many states across our nation. We want you to know that our team is working very hard to continue to support our learners and our families and also respond to the ever-evolving guidance from both our state and federal government, as well as our municipal partners and our county and state health departments. We appreciate the partnership of each of those aforementioned agencies. They have been truly invaluable partners to us and have provided very important guidance, as has our county ISD. Just today, we sent out what I believe was our fifth communication to parents regarding the statewide closure of schools. We've created a new portal on our website. If you go to our website, in the main section of the opening page, you will see a portal that has been designed to hold all of the communications that have been sent from the district to our families, and it also has any attachments that have gone with any of those communications. A particular note would be the FAQ that we sent to families last Friday, which was very comprehensive. We know it was a bit lengthy, but we were really trying to attempt to answer many questions that have been raised by both staff and our families over the past few days since the Governor announced the closing of schools, really just on Thursday evening at 11:00 PM. So Friday evening, we sent out a very comprehensive FAQ. We sent another update yesterday, and then today, families should have just recently received another comprehensive email that includes a couple of supports that I'd like to mention. So first and foremost, we have put together, with the help of many caring individuals in our school community, a process for curbside meal delivery for families in our community. Any student in our district under the age of 18 or any of our students who we service with an IEP aged 18 to 26 are welcome to come to any of our three designated locations to pick up meals for themselves during this closure. A little bit more detail on that, we're going to have a pickup distribution curbside at each of our high schools, starting this Wednesday, March 18th, and the consecutive Tuesdays following. The time will always be from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You simply have to pull up, let us know how many children are being serviced in your family. We'll provide meals that include five breakfast, five lunch, and milk for each of those meals, as well as some supplemental food supplies from our district food pantry, as well as provided through generous donations. So that will be available to families starting this Wednesday. We are trying to put that out far and wide, so we want to be sure our families are aware of that. That's the first support that we have, so again, we hope our families will take advantage of that. It is for all or any student in our district. It is not limited to students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. There is no need that needs to be demonstrated, and again, we're trying to make it as convenient as possible. If a family can't make it to one of the pickup sites on those dates, there is a link to fill out a very brief form with name, address, and phone number. We will have those meals delivered to your residents. Or you can contact the number that's listed on the flyer or the email address. So we want to be sure that there are no families who are not able to access these resources. So first of all, any questions from our Board colleagues on that?
Yes. A number of community members have asked how they can assist in this endeavor.
Sure.
Can you address that?
I can, thank you. So a couple of different ways. We have had, first, many LPS staff who have reached out and asked to be part of this process. We've also had wonderful partners in our faith-based community, as well as our business community, offer to help. So initially, with the meal bagging and the distribution at the pickup sites, we have sent out a volunteer sign-up sheet to all of our staff, and I have to say, within about 40 minutes, every single slot was filled, which is not surprising at all, considering the amazing staff we have here in LPS. What that has left is many people looking to still be able to help. So what we are going to be calling on some of our faith-based partners and some of our other volunteers is to help make, in pairs, some of the home deliveries. And so we've been in contact with some of those organizations, and we will continue to do so over the next day or two. Again, not everything will happen this week. This will be replicated every week throughout the school closure, and so I anticipate we'll continue to need those extra hands throughout the time.
And if folks are interested in doing that, they should...
They should contact, they can contact my office and we'll get it to the right people.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. One of the other resources that we want to provide is a social-emotional hotline for students and families. So as part of the communication that went out today to families, you, our families would have seen a hotline where students or parents can access support if they are experiencing some mental health issues, anxiety, depression, et cetera, as we go through this very unique circumstance, not only in our district, but in our state, in our country, and in the world. And we know that many of our students rely on our amazing providers within the schools, and so both Dr. Terrell and Dr. Taylor will initially respond to those calls and then help to get the resources needed for our families. So we wanted to be sure that not only that meal support, but that social-emotional support was in place for our students. The third piece, our academic resources, to keep students engaged and providing enrichment opportunities for our learners during this time. So as you know, we have a wide range of needs of students within our district, and we also have a variety of circumstances in which students would be able to be supported with their learning at home. So one of the things that our academic services team, a number of our staff, and our district leaders have put together are very comprehensive portals for each level, pre-K, K-4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, and post-secondary. On those portals, parents will find not only very helpful links that have been well-vetted and researched, they also include a short description. And then we also include a bit of information called "A Day in the Life," where we encourage our students to take care of you, take care of your mind, take care of your body, take care of your family, and take care of your community. And then within that, we've given specific suggestions that students can engage with each day under each of those categories. So again, we know the ability to support that kind of learning looks different for every learner, and what we are trying to do is, one, not replicate the instruction that's provided by our dedicated staff each day. What we are looking to do is provide helpful resources and enrichment in order to keep our students' minds engaged, their bodies healthy, and provide some helpful resources that have been carefully organized and vetted. That includes resources for learners across the learning spectrum. So we're very proud to be sending out information in all three of those areas today, so we wanted to make sure that we shared that with our community, especially our parents. And if you have any questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Parents should not expect their teachers to contact them? Is there going to be any type of faculty contact with any of the students or families? Or is that something that we're not going to be doing?
Not specifically regarding those resources. Those resources are not meant to be graded, nor are they mandatory, but those are helpful resources for all of our students. If students have clarification or questions or need support or are just looking for just a listening ear or some support from their teacher, they're certainly welcome to reach out, and I know our staff will be checking their emails and responding, but they won't be providing, for instance, specific daily contact.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I've had some questions about that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the way to contact the Superintendent's office, because the district is officially closed...
Yes.
What would the best way to be for that for the volunteers?
So all of, they can still call the main number, and those messages will come to email, and Mrs. Wozniak will then share them with me or with the appropriate cabinet member.
Okay. So is the correct phone number for that, the 734...
744-2510.
Okay, and that's for volunteers. The social-emotional hotline or the academic resources, those went out to parents in the emails, is that correct?
They did, and I can, I believe we have that number. Here we go. And I want to thank our IT folks for putting together something that we hope will be a little easy to remember. So for the social-emotional support, we're using SES as the code, so it would be 734-744-2SES. And then the email is ses@lavoniapublicschools.org.
Okay. And then the academic resources, those are, that information has been emailed to all parents, so they would have the proper links.
It has been emailed to all parents. It's on the portal, the special COVID-19 portal on our website. Each of those links are available there. They've also been sent out via Twitter and Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
And the last piece is, we've had many, many, while we're trying to provide resources out to parents, we've also had many, many people ask how they can help and if they can donate to support families in our community. And so although we certainly want to assure people that we have the resources to provide the meals, which we've spoken to families, and these academic resources, et cetera, but we do have families that still wanted to make a donation. So the opportunity to donate is also included on our website underneath that portal, and it's also in the email that went out to all parents and all staff. So there's a PaySchools link where if families want to make a donation, what we will do is supplement the food resources for families in general, in addition to the individual meals provided for the students.
Are there questions? Seeing that Mrs. May.
I just, I want to thank your staff, Mrs. Oquist, for all of this information, because I think as parents, it leaves us in a lurch of not knowing what to do or how to handle this. It came so fast, just like for you, it came fast for parents, too, to know how to handle their kids for seven hours a day, and they have a lot of energy and they have a desire to learn. And so I just want to encourage the parents to go to that website, because it has great information for parents, just for guidance on how to handle things, some questions about, if your kids have questions about it, and how to talk to them, and some breathing techniques, but also some things that are enrichment, for sure, but that kids might not get in school, some coding activities. My son did a fantastic coding. He wouldn't get off the coding website today. So I think that it's an opportunity for kids to maybe get something that they're not going to get in school, something that they're interested in, to be able to expand their time, as opposed to just sitting around and doing nothing. So I think it's a great opportunity for kids and parents to give them something to do, and there's so many different resources. If they don't like this website, they can try this website. And with the libraries closed, it's really hard to find something to keep your kids occupied. And so that website is so thorough and well-thought-out, and so I just want to thank your staff for providing that, because it just gives us a place to land, so.
Thank you. I want to certainly acknowledge Mrs. O'Brien, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Terrell, our Director of Student Services, and really our entire team and members of our staff. I really do encourage parents, this is far beyond just a list of resources, so to speak. These really have been well-thought-out. The reason why there aren't just pages and pages is because we really do believe that these are the best opportunities for students to continue their learning and to keep their skills sharp. Accessing some of these websites and really taking time, maybe you just simply take the first day or two to go through each of them, really take a look through all of the materials that have been provided. It really is quite comprehensive. While it may look like a simple list, if you go through each and have the opportunity to have your children maneuver through and take a look at those sites, bookmark those that are of greatest interest to them, there really is quite a bit of opportunity to keep our students engaged, keep their skills sharp, and keep them learning.
I'm confident that I speak on behalf of the Board, and I know the last few days have been very trying on you and your staff, the entire team, but I think the amount of work that you've put in, everybody involved, this has been a huge team effort to get to this point. There was so much to do, particularly when the Governor announced the closing of schools. To get to where we are today in as few days as you had to get to it, it's really a testament to all the hard work that the entire staff and the Cabinet and everyone in our district has put together, so we thank you as a Board.
Well, thank you so much, and I will certainly pass that along, and I share that with every, as you said, every single cabinet member and so many of our staff that really have just immediately said, "What do we need to do? Tell me and we'll do it. How can we help?" And that's LPS, so thank you.
As Mrs. Burton said, I've had calls as well from community members wanting to know, "What can we do to help?"
Absolutely.
So they've all rallied around. It's amazing, when something like this happens, how people get together.
Yes.
And it's a real testament. Thank you. Mrs. Burton, do you have something?
Yes, Mrs. Oquist, one question that's been raised, that some of us have the answer to, but I don't even know if the entire Board is aware, but I know that many in the public is not, is to whether or not our employees will be paid. Folks are concerned for the economic well-being of our neighbors and friends in our community.
That's a great question, Mrs. Burton, and I think it's even grown, even in the past 24 hours, as different businesses are shut down and folks are, the work stoppage has taken place for so many more. So we do want to reassure our community that with the support of our Board of Education, we will be paying every single employee in Livonia Public Schools during the entire closure. Hourly employees, salary employees, they will continue to get paid through this entire period of time, including our long-term guest teachers. They've made a commitment to us. We are planning on having them back after the closure. We're asking them to do things like finalize report cards and communicate and things like that, and so we wanted to be sure that they were also included in that. So we appreciate the support of our Board to do that and certainly value every single one of our almost 2,000 staff.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Although I know it's in the letter, for those who haven't yet received the letter, would you please address the question of spring break?
Absolutely, yes. I talked about all the resources and didn't cover the one burning question. We are going to continue as scheduled with our spring break recess. We've consulted with all of the other districts in our county, as well as our contiguous counties that have similar breaks, and we're seeing that very much across the Board. We took that into great consideration, but we do feel that it's appropriate, that the, right now, the closure is scheduled to end on April 5th. Our spring break will go on as scheduled April 6th through the 10th, and we will return on April 13th, unless we have different direction from our state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are we all set on that?
We are.
All right, then we'll move to Item Three, our Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Bonifield.
Thank you, President Johnson. Our first item up today is 3A, which is the Wayne County Enhancement Millage Renewal, and Mrs. Oquist is going to start us off with that?
Thank you, Mrs. Bonifield. As you know, we've spent time at the past three meetings, talking extensively about the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, the possibility of putting it back on the ballot for renewal, and spending a great deal of time on the impact it's had here in Livonia Schools, and to some extent, spent a bit of time with regard to Wayne County as a whole. This evening, we wanted to bring to you the opportunity to have that final consideration before we bring a formal recommendation to you at our next voting meeting with regard to requesting that RESA put this on the ballot for November of 2020. So our administration, based on all of the information we have shared with you in presentations prior to this, are recommending to the Board that we vote to approve request to place this on the ballot for November of 2020. As you know, individual Boards of Education need to consider, are asked to consider that resolution, and if they vote in favor of that, then that resolution will be sent to the RESA Board, who will then make a final vote based on the input of the districts. So we've seen quite a bit of support across the county for that. I wanted to give our Board an opportunity to speak to that this evening. We were supposed to have it as a voting item on Monday, March 23rd, but due to the guidance from the state, we are canceling the regular Board meeting of next Monday. So although we have some items, voting items this evening at our special meeting, in consultation with President Johnson, we both felt that because we had publicly shared a timeline many times that included our vote taking place at the regular meeting following this committee meeting, we're going to hold off until our next Board meeting before we ask you to take a formal vote. So really, this evening is just for you. We ask you to weigh in on that recommendation and give the floor back over to the Board.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, are you going to add anything to that, or you're just up for the next?
I am up. Just in case there was any questions related to that.
All right, guys, let's go. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonifield. We've had just a ton of information over the last few meetings. I've looked at it. We've all had discussion on it. I know where I stand. I really don't need any additional information on this, so I'm ready to go on it.
And Mrs. Burton?
Likewise, I am in favor of this Enhancement Millage. The opportunities that it has given to our district include bringing additional reading resources into our district, helping to stabilize our fund balance and put us in a position where we can weather storms that are unexpected, and certainly, the current situation is unexpected. It's an example of one. Being able to hire and retain high-quality staff, these are all just a few benefits that we have been able to realize in our district. We've been able to purchase updated curriculum that had to go on hiatus for quite a number of years when we went through the recession and we had not yet caught up. We're not fully caught up, but we are certainly significantly closer than we had been prior to the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. But these are significant benefits to our school district. Seeing as we were all at this table, I think I can speak for everyone in saying we would like to see funding change from Lansing, however, it's not changed. And at least I do not see that changing in the next couple of months, prior to the next school year coming up. This is one of the, this is the only legal way that this Board can vote to put before the voters an opportunity to raise taxes within our community, and by that, it's our countywide community. I do recognize that I'm not thrilled, but I recognize that we now legally do share some of that money with our charter schools. I'm not happy about that portion, because the charter schools do not have to provide the very costly special education that our public school districts do, nor do they provide transportation, which is significant and costly that we provide for our students, nor do they provide into the retirement system. So these are costs they do not have to incur. For that reason, I'm not happy that we do need to share these funds with our charter schools, because it's not apples-to-apples. However, the alternative I see is far, far worse. I see that our school district significantly needs this money. It would be approximately $4.5 million, $5 million for our school district, which is significant. And in times that we're going through right now, where we're all looking for how to help our neighbors, I'm pleased at least that when we're sharing this money from the Livonia community, it is going to the Livonia community and those school districts inside of Wayne County. We know where this money is going, and it is truly helping our neighbors. It certainly enhances Livonia Public Schools offerings, and for some of our neighbors in smaller districts, it's vital to their very survival. So for all these reasons, I'm very much in favor of putting this on the ballot and asking our voters what their opinion is.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. While I agree with my colleagues, I was hoping someone would address the reason why we are approaching the November ballot with this issue, when it has not yet expired.
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to do that. That's a great question. The state legislature voted on a requirement that is for Wayne County only, but that in Wayne County, for the Enhancement Millage, we may move forward with a renewal request only in November of 2020 or November of 2022. One of the reasons why we chose to move forward with 2020 is, at that time, it will still be considered a renewal request. If we waited until November of 2022, the millage would have expired in December 31st of 2021, and we would, it would be considered a new request for a new levy for our voters. And so we made the determination that we would make that request now. It certainly will not be levied until the other has expired, so it would start in 2022 and then go six years from there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Summers?
Yeah, so I'm definitely supportive of the measure. We've spent the last couple of weeks talking about how vital it is... We've spent the last couple of weeks talking about how vital it is for the district. I just want to do one clarifying thing. Mrs. Burton, in your remarks, you said we can raise taxes from our community. I wanted to be abundantly clear that we are not asking to raise people's taxes. This is a renewal. There's no new money, and I just, they want people to get the wrong impression. I know that's not what you meant.
Thank you for clarifying that. You're correct.
Mrs. Bradford?
I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. I am in support of the enhancement. And like you said, it is a renewal, and we have seen the many benefits the district has gotten out of this, these monies. And I think that for sure, for me, this is a good way for us to keep going with what we've been doing. And just like Colleen said, with the times we're in right now, this is a good way to keep everything going. So I would be in support of the renewal.
Mrs. Fran? You can pass if you want. Everybody else is going.
No, no, it's okay. Yes, I think that, I'm happy that it's a, that we're not asking for any additional cost and any additional taxes for our taxpayers. It will be what they passed originally. It won't go into effect until the current one expires. And so I think that that's vital to say we're not double-dipping or anything like that in terms of the timing of when it is. And so I think that that is vital. I think when we look at what we provide as a school district to our kids and then ability that we've had to reduce class sizes, it is so real in the classes and in the buildings. When you're in the buildings, to be able to see a teacher who can effectively teach a classroom of 23 kids as opposed to a class of 30 children. And I know that so often we say it's always been 30, and 30 was fine when I was younger, but I really do think that kids today are a little bit different than what they have been in the past. And kids today, there is just so many more, there is documentation and there are studies that show that kids today, we have more instances of social issues, of classroom behavior, of behavior issues that come up in the classroom. And so it's not as easy as just sending them to school and they are educated from eight to four. There is a lot that goes into that, and there is a lot of resources that need to go into it besides just the classroom teacher and the services that we are providing. And it is amazing what we are doing. So although I wish that this was not the case in terms of levying our taxpayers, I think that our district, when we look at what we provide and what we've done with the money, I think it's been a, just being able to provide a service that is so vital to the students and to our community, I think, has been overwhelming.
Mrs. Okus, can you just clarify one thing for me? And maybe this is, I should know this right off the top of my head, but apparently it has eluded me, is that they've changed the rules so that we can only vote on this twice, once in 2020. We can't opt to vote on it at any other time until 2022.
That's correct, yes.
And they changed these rules recently.
After the passage in 2016 of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage.
And that included the same time that after we passed the original Enhancement Millage, that they changed the rules again to include charter schools.
That's correct.
Okay, so those were two big rule changes that they made after we already started this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I will vote yes on this. I agree with my colleagues. I think it's unfortunate that the state has put us in this position, but it is what it is, and we've seen a lot of great improvements with this money. So does anybody else have any questions or comments on this matter? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I just want to make one question. We've all had a heck of a week. It's been crazy. And as we already discussed, the district has responded admirably to support our teachers and our families. How much of what we were able to do and will be doing over the next several weeks is because of this Enhancement Millage and the funding that it's provided for our district?
Mrs. Smith, do you want to tackle that one?
I'd be happy to. And in fact, we'll be going into our next agenda item as some budget amendment recommendations, and some of the recommendations that we'll be going over are because we're in the financial position that we are, that we can have dialogues about refunding families for their childcare costs and for the daycare costs. Those are things that if we were in a different financial position, we might not even be able to have the conversation because, as we've shared, we've made a commitment to our staff that we are going to continue to pay our staff, so we're going to continue to incur those costs. But yet, we want to bring aid to our families in any way we can, so we're looking at doing refunds or credits for this time that the families aren't utilizing our services. So again, that's a discussion we wouldn't even be able to have if our financial position was different. And that's one thing about the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. As we've spent time over the last few weeks talking about the additions we've been able to make, it's been, you know, across the board, we've been able to touch so many lives with these funds. And the fact that we are able to do that and in addition, put ourselves in a financial position where we can weather storms that come, you know, is just, is amazing, so.
I'll just add one. It's not a huge dollar item, but as you know, as more information came out about COVID-19, cleaning protocols were a huge question on the minds of our parents and of our staff. And we shared with our community that with the foresight of our maintenance and operations leadership, in the fall, they had purchased two machines that was, that using those would be able to provide hospital-grade disinfection to surfaces throughout classrooms and able to do so in a much more timely manner than a manual wiping of every surface. When this, that was initially purchased just to get us through in the future cold and flu seasons. It's a good practice. We had the, we were in the financial position to be able to do that. And then subsequently, as this situation came up, what we realized was if we could do that and do that through as many schools as possible on a regular rotation, that would be ideal, especially in times such as this. So we were able to go ahead and purchase five additional machines to be able to continue that rotation, not only this year and through this virus, but to be able to use these for years to come. We were able to purchase additional sanitizing wipes and resources for our schools and classrooms. And we were able to do all of those things because we're in a more financially stable position. Certainly, that wasn't the intent of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. If folks look back at our February 10th Committee of the Whole Meeting, we gave a very comprehensive presentation that went through each academic and social-emotional support we've provided through these dollars. But this, as you said, Mrs. Jarvis, is just another example of when we are in a crisis situation, how are we able to support our learners and our staff and our families when we're in a more financially stable position such as what we find ourselves in now?
And President Johnson, did you have, one of you guys had your hands raised?
Yes. What I wanted to say was, you know, this isn't the first time that a Wayne County Enhancement Millage has been up for vote. For those of you that weren't on the board when Mrs. Burton and I first started, this issue had come up beforehand, and I was never in favor of putting it on the ballot. But as Mrs. Bonnefield pointed out, the state has sort of put us in a position where we really didn't have much choice. And the reason that I was never in favor of it is because we weren't getting back a dollar for a dollar. But because of the financial position that we were in, you know, 70 cents on the dollar was better than nothing. And therefore, when it came around the last time, I had, at least I had an open mind and decided that I think it was better for us to move forward with it. And I have the same feeling now, that nobody likes to be a donor district. But on the other hand, look what it's done for us, things that we wouldn't have been able to do without it. So again, I will be in favor of putting it on the ballot as well.
Mrs. Fran?
I just wanted to say one other piece, too. I know that we're talking about all the things that it has done, and your staff did an amazing job of sharing that with us. But I think it's important to say, too, this has been a huge financial benefit to us as a district in terms of being able to provide things, paying our staff, that sort of thing that we wouldn't do if we didn't have the fund balance. But it has also not been a windfall in terms of we've been able to provide every classroom with a new textbook that has a textbook older than 10 years. Or we are still, we are not putting chandeliers in classrooms. We are still, my children still have old textbooks in some of their classrooms. So I think that it's important to say, this has been a huge benefit, and we've been able to do a lot of things, but we are not dropping class sizes to 14 or 18, and we are not providing every classroom with new textbooks, and we are not providing one-to-one student Chromebooks. We are still being very conservative with what we're doing, and we're not asking for brand-new everything for 100% of the district. So it is a, it is a need, and we need this in terms of being able to provide high-quality instruction to our students, but it's not also all-encompassing that, once we do it, we'll be able to have new everything in every classroom. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. That is really important, and we have been very, very judicious. And we set five priorities when we first went out to our community in 2016. We have adhered to those priorities very, very closely, and we will continue to do so because, as you've said, we've been able to supplement a lot of those materials. We've been able to impact class size to some extent and add additional supports for many of our students. But as you will hear in that, we are certainly not saying all, all, all. And those are, we are still really climbing back from a very challenging financial time in public education, which really, with the exception of this, still exists. And what this has done is allowed us to begin to restore the most essential needs in our schools. And so we look forward to continuing to focus on those essential needs, should we be fortunate enough to continue to move forward with this support from our community.
Okay, I've got it down for the next voting meeting.
Great.
So we'll put it down there. So we're wrapped up with A. We're gonna move on to B, which is the budget amendment. And I think somebody said weathering the storm. And I know as we've been growing our fund balance, it's been a question about why and how much money we hold, and why do we need to have it? And I gotta tell you right now, as a board member, when we go through these things that we're gonna talk about in the budget and some of the things that we're, Mrs. Okus just talked about with being able to pay our teachers, I know it's the right thing that we're doing, and we are able, without hesitation, to make sure that we can do the right things for our community with making sure that our kids have food. Mrs. Smith's gonna talk about refunding some of the childcare money to parents, being able to not only pay our salaried employees, but also be able to compensate our hourly employees and keep those. And those are things that we can do as a board without hesitation because we have been judicious, and we're in the financial position that we're in. And we don't have to wait for, you know, six months to figure out whether or not we can go back and do this. So I want to say that this, this is the, you know, this is one of the storms, and this is, this is what we've been doing. So I just, I think it's important, while we're talking about this, that this is a storm we've been, one of the storms, we've been talking about it, and we're going to be able to do the right thing for our families in the district, so. Go ahead.
Exactly. Thank you very much. I wanted to start off by sharing, we had originally intended for March to be a full budget amendment and have the board voting on that. As we know, though, this is one of the responsibilities of the board, and we know that you take it very seriously. So we did not want to present information to you tonight and then ask you to go around and also, you know, be voting on it. We want to give you the opportunity to, you know, consider it, ask questions. So this, tonight will be about the budget amendment, but we will not bring that to the board until April for actual, to be voted on. But we did want to share, you know, in looking through our accounts, especially in light of our current situation, you know, what we do think will need adjusting. So I'll start off with our general fund revenue. As we shared, trying to bring some relief to our families. So looking at our fee-based program, that would be the SACT, the before and after school care, the preschool, as well as the daycare, and looking at doing refunds for our families in recognition that many of our families are now scrambling to find childcare for their students. And so we are going to bring that recommendation to the board in our next amendment, so that'll be adjustment to those revenue lines. Something we're also considering, depending on how long that we are out, looking at our pay-to-participate fees that we've collected from families, and it might become a point where we have a conversation with the board of, you know, would that be appropriate to refund some of that to the families as well? Also looking at something as simple as our athletic events have been canceled, therefore, gate receipts aren't coming in as expected, so that'll be an adjustment that we make on the revenue side. Also looking at our facility usage and our lease payments. You know, we've had regular communication with our leases, and, you know, if our facilities aren't available for them to rent, then, you know, that revenue won't be necessarily coming in. So we anticipate some revenue adjustments for those items as well. So those are just a few things on the general fund, just specifically related, again, to our current situation. So the nice thing about pushing this amendment back to April, too, is hopefully we'll have some more definitive numbers for you for next month. Moving on to the general fund expenditure side, the main reason we were bringing an amendment to the board was regarding a school bus purchase that we had approved and put into the budget that we now know will not come in before June 30th. Therefore, it won't come out of the 1920 budget. It'll be 2021 expenditure. So we'll go ahead and remove that line item from the current year budget and then budget for that in the following year. And I know we've talked about this before. Again, that was an opportunity made available through a grant, and we took action on that in January and had the board approval to move forward. But we were not able, or we still have not been able to put that purchase order on until we get the formal approval from the grant agency. So that's something that we're waiting on, and, you know, in light of our current situation, too, not sure if that'll be delayed. Other expenditures, too, as you all know, we have regular cleaning routines and stuff like that. But in the light of, again, the current situation, asking our staff to come and do overtime to make sure that we are current on that stuff, so I anticipate an adjustment on the overtime for both our maintenance and operations staff as well as our transportation staff, who have done a thorough cleaning of all the buses. We mentioned about the supplies, the cleaning supplies. Again, you know, we had supplies on hand and we had budgeted for that, but just kind of ramping up our supply to make sure that we can handle the current needs is another item that we'll look to adjust in April. Also, we had had discussions with the board. As Ms. Okus shared, we are making food available for our students even during this closure and for the families. We are gonna, of course, seek reimbursement where we can from federal government, but we are looking to supplement some of the things that we are able to do through the federal program. And so having some flexibility to use potentially some general fund dollars to do that would give us, again, flexibility to meet the needs of our families. And one of the things we've been so grateful, again, link was sent out through Pay Schools for donations, and I'm already getting emails with receipts coming in for that. So I want to reassure our community that separate accounts have been set up for that so we can track exactly what's coming in for that, and then making sure that those dollars do go towards their intended purposes. So that's taking place right now. And those are the big items on the general fund expenditure side. Also wanted to mention our Health and Welfare Fund. We discussed this at the community meeting, but long story short, because of a change in contract language, we would be looking at doing a one-time transfer from the Health and Welfare Fund. This is related to our teacher insurance benefits. They typically, or they formally went from September through August, and due to the contract language change, they'll now run from July to June. Therefore, we're gonna have this one-time credit as we adjust the period that it covers. So we'll look to do a transfer for that, which I'll bring more information on that next month. One other item I wanted to mention was our Capital Projects Fund. That is a fund that was established to house the proceeds from sale of property, so recognizing one-time revenues. Over the last few months, we've engaged an architectural firm to do, or look at doing renovations here in Central Office, and, you know, we were pleased that what they brought back meant that we could proceed and be within the allotted budget. And so during this budget amendment, too, I'll bring forward recommendations for engaging with HED to continue those services, as well as our owner's rep to help us manage this project. So those are two things that I'll incorporate in this budget amendment and bring further detail on. So again, this is just kind of a broad overview of some of the things that we're keeping track of, and we wanted to make sure the board is in the loop with and supportive of. And I'll bring more detail to you in April at our study session and at the committee meeting, and then ideally bring to a vote in, at our regular meeting in April.
Questions?
Yes, you mentioned the lessees in some of our buildings. What is our, our situation right now? Is anyone who is leasing space in our building closed out of our buildings? Is it on a case-by-case? What's, what's happening with that?
Yep, so really we have two different kind of divisions of how we receive money for the use of our facilities. One is through facility usage and that is really just on a kind of a one-time basis. Those things have been put on halt and then as far as our leases, our director of operations has reached out to our leases regarding kind of plans moving forward with them, so.
That is true. Yes, we, the first portion, Mr. McDonald's office had handled the communication and then I've been one by one. And it just started, I mean, literally today I was just putting something together. So I don't have a, a full update, but they, I've, I've gotten one response already who said that, you know, they had already put something out to their employees and, and the folks that, that they work with to, to have stopped. So we'll start getting a little bit more information from them as they respond to the email communication that I sent out to them today. So again, we only have a very small number of, of full lessees and, and two of which have already stated that they were going to stop while, while we were closed. So I just need to hear back for, from some more.
So we'll provide an update to the board in your Thursday update with regard to each of our outside lessees and again, as Mrs. Smith said, any of our rentals, et cetera, of those spaces, we have stopped because once we have sanitized and cleaned our schools this week, we will be closing them and not having folks re-enter until we're closer to the opening of school. And so we do have a couple of schools that are not our K-12 schools that are utilized by our lessees and we are in contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will move us on to item three C, district notification system. And Mrs. Jenkins?
Actually, I'm back as well. Good evening. You may recall a couple of weeks ago on March 2nd, at our study session, I introduced the topic of always trying to share the excitement and enthusiasm of our communications department and their plans for a new notification system. Tonight I bring back that, that source of the excitement and enthusiasm, Ms. Jenkins, to share some of the details of that work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Willemborg. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Oquist. It is a very exciting thing. We've given our current notification system quite the workout this week and we're anxious to move forward with a new, new product. So as you may already know, we, I formed a committee, we interviewed, we received virtual demonstrations from three separate companies and we landed on School Messenger for our new notification system. And I just wanted to provide some rationale for that decision. I'll just go through some bullet points very quickly for you and take any questions that you may have. First of all, School Messenger is the, excuse me, the most widely used K-12, excuse me, K-12 notification product in the country since, and this has been the case since 2011. They currently serve twenty, I'm sorry, 32 million students worldwide. Let's see, the system, we made sure that the system would integrate well with our current LPS data systems like MyStar, MyPayments Plus, our transportation system and the like. It has, the system has an instant translation feature that will translate to more than 100 languages based on the parent's set preferences. So if we have, for our families who speak a different language as their home language at home, they can set their preferences to receive all of our school communications in their language. So that's a really cool feature. It also, it has a built-in compliance tool to ensure that all of our messages are ADA compliant, which is very important. It's very user-friendly, the platform is easy to use as an administrator, as the person on our end sending the messages out, which would primarily be our school principals and myself. Let's see, there is a cool cross-platform feature that allows us to post, within one post, we can post, send the message to our parents via email, text message, it will post to our website, to our integrated mobile app and to our social media accounts, all in one. So I can't wait to play with that. That'll save a lot of time on our end. It has customizable templates. This is very exciting. I think this was the, the feature that garnered the most attention from our committee, which included a few, a couple of principals. There, there are customized, customizable templates and email newsletter templates for our communications to have, just to look much better. I always joke that, you know, our current communications are, are pretty bland, to say the least. They, they do not look like they come from, they're not representative of, of our school district. So we would be creating templates for each school building with their logo and the end user, the parents and the staff members will be able to instantly see that, that newsletter. It wouldn't, it would not be an attachment. It would be more like a, like you'd see in a Constant Contact style email. So that'll be nice. It will also include a classroom messaging tool similar to Remind. We have a ton of teachers who use the free product, Remind. This would, would bring all of our classroom text messages under the district instead of all the random Remind accounts that are out there. So that'll be pretty neat. And let's see, oh, this is a really, this is something that we've also heard from our community members. The new system will give, give us the ability to subscribe to email lists or calling lists. You can set your preferences, you can sign up to receive messages from just your, your kids' schools. If a community member wanted just district-wide, excuse me, district-wide emails, excuse me, they could sign up for those. They do not have to be a parent or in the district as we currently have it set up, so that's kind of neat. Let's see. Cost-wise, with all of these features, we were just blown away by the demonstration and the capability and reliability of the system. And we were overjoyed to learn that School Messenger has put this product up on the RMC site, has, has a very low, the lowest bid that we received at $1.25 per student. They're giving us, so at, at 14,000 students, it would be an annual cost of $17,500. And for the first year, they're including that free newsletter feature and subsequent years, they would tag on 10 cents per student for that news, newsletter feature, bringing the total second year and beyond to 18,900. So I, I brought an example, it's not very good, but, because it kind of got cut off on the email from the, from our rep, but this is an example of a newsletter template and it's just very, very simple. The principals and myself or whoever, department heads can just fill in the, the template and shoot your email off, so. We can also attach photos, videos, we can't do any of that now, so we're very excited. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are you able to vary the format of the text and use different fonts and different imagery within the email?
Yep, yep. The, I was impressed with the, the editing tool, the editor. It, it is very similar to Microsoft where it's got all the features. You can, we, we don't want to get too fancy for ADA compliance sake, but you can definitely improve the look and feel of your email communications. So, yeah, we're excited.
Other questions? Mrs. Bur.
I missed it if you said it. Do we sign a long-term contract with them? I know you said the first year and the second year and then...
For, for right now, it is, oh, I left that paper on my desk. It is, I believe it is signed for the first year, signed for two years.
Okay.
To lock in that 10 cents per student second year.
So if we don't like it, if something is, comes up that we're not expecting, we're not locked into it for 10 years?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
And that will take us to D, our public address system and classroom sound amplification. And Mr. Francis and Mrs. Smith are helping us out with that.
I'll see if I can get this one done before Phil sits down. I don't know. Not that that's a challenge.
Phil's going to be sitting there for a long time.
I know, give him a break. But, so this item originally came to the board back in March of 2014. One of the first projects for the 2013 bond was going back and putting in new public address systems and sound fields in the classrooms. And so what we have before you tonight is a change in vendor. We continue to remain within the budget authorized by the board, but the original vendor that was appointed, sound engineering, is it, was in the process or is in the process of going out of business and was not taking on any new business. Therefore, we have our one last building, Nishiiro, in need of this updated equipment. And so we have a vendor that we currently work with. The vendor helped us in our elementary buildings with their community rooms and the technologies in the community rooms. That vendor is actually the only sole provider here in Wayne County of the particular equipment that we use for the PA systems. And so what we're asking for the board tonight is the consideration of adding a second vendor on to this project, so not any additional dollars, but authorizing a different vendor to help us complete the project.
Questions?
Okay, and we'll put that up to vote in the next voting meeting, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Later tonight? Oh, no, sorry. Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, are you guys all set on that?
Yes.
All right, and then that concludes finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That will now take us to item four, our building in sight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Centers.
Thank you. This evening, we have several items. Item A is paving bid results. Mr. Francis will present.
Good evening, everybody. I was going to invite our friend, Mr. Palteral, over, but I turned around and my last friend finally left me. I'm surprised it took so long.
There he is, there he is.
He's right here. He's coughing away from the drink.
I'm going to set it up a little bit here, so we, so we have our, our summer paving project is what we're here to discuss, we have the bid results. I want to give you the buildings, which are, as far as actual paving jobs themselves, Jackson Early Child Center, Johnson Upper Elementary and Nishiiro Elementary. You will also see in my letter to you that, or my memo to Mrs. Oquist, that Churchill is mentioned. That is a simple paintover job. If you recall, last summer, we did the, that front lot, which is the West Lot, and that is where most people park, because it's right on Newburgh. We had redone that paving job in the summer of 19 and then we had changed, the engineering firm had changed the, the striping on it and the way the configuration for parking was and that was all in working with the building. But once we started, it, it just wasn't working correctly. The way the flow was, size of vehicles today, et cetera, while it was all within minimum requirements and, and whatnot, Churchill just said, you know, listen, we're fine if it, if it was just painted back the way it used to be painted. We went ahead and did that. So what we're coming back now is, and that was, when you do that, you black it out, you put more paint. If you've been at the Churchill lot, it looks like there's a whole bunch of lines weighing on. So we're just going to do a seal coat and a repaint at Churchill. So we put that on to this, this, this project. The other three jobs are all planned projects from our 10-year facilities and our 10-year sinking fund project. And, and at this point, we have deferred Johnson for a few years because when we were going to do them, we decided to do the roof instead. So we've, we've pushed them a couple of years. We, we deferred Jackson for a year. Usually we were coming around after we finished a renovation project. In the following summer, we would do the, the parking lot. In Jackson's case, they were renovated in 18, we did not do them in 19, so we are coming back now in 20. And Nishiiro was renovated in, in 19, now we're going to come back to them in, in 20 to pave. With that, I'll let Mr. Terrell go through the Plant Moran Cressa owner's rep letter of recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. So we've actually been doing paving work on the district for quite some time, as Mr. Francis mentioned. For these projects, we put construction documents on the street in mid-February, received three bids in March from the three firms that have really been targeting this work for a number of years. The bids came in very well. Obviously with the economy a little bit slowed down, I guess one of the side effects of that is that oil prices have went down considerably, which is one of the major materials in asphalt. So we had some good fortune there amongst all the bad fortune out in the world. So bids for that came in a little bit under $1 million, which was about $140,000, $150,000 under budget, which is good, that'll allow us to do some additional projects in the future. And T&amp;M Asphalt is a firm we've worked with before, they do very good work, so we have no concerns about their ability to get the, the job done this summer.
Summer of 19, they actually did several buildings for us in our paving projects.
Yep, and then I should mention, assuming this gets approved by the board and the contract gets drawn up, we certainly have a number of provisions inside of that contract to give the district flexibility as far as if anything else should change, whether we hit the pause button or do anything else to reschedule that work or anything along those lines. So it's essentially at the district's sole discretion how they want to proceed once the contract's awarded, so, with, with very little risk on the, on the contract side, so.
So generally, as, as we've done in, in the past, we have a contingency dollar amount on here. We've gone with 10% this year. We had been going with 8% the previous years. We've moved it to 10 this year because last year we had a very wet spring. We found when we started to get to a couple of our buildings, we were digging and digging and undercutting and undercutting and it was, it, it was expensive. We, we did stay within what the contingency was, but we wanted to just ensure out of an abundance of caution to have an appropriate amount of, of contingency. In addition, we did twice as many parking lots last summer, so having a lower percentage contingency on last year's project still gave us a real dollar amount far greater than what we're going into this summer's paving with, with, with the three smaller buildings. Any questions?
Mrs. Bur. This is probably, I'm not sure which one of you would like to take a stab at this. If the current three-week school closure did extend, does that also cover any construction work being done on our properties? I mean, is that also forbidden then by the state? Or do we not know the answer to that yet and it's...
As of right now, construction sites are not closed down at all. Who knows what the future may bring, but that was what I was alluding to about if something changes down the road and we need to suspend the start of the project or push it further into the summer, we have that availability. Also, this is not a 12-week project, these are probably more like four to six-week projects at each site. So even with a condensed summer, we'd probably still be okay.
Okay.
Obviously, as work, if work were to pile up, there may be some schedule considerations, but, and there's always different ways to do parking lot replacement. If we needed to do something more temporary, do an overlay rather than a complete replacement that would get us by for five or seven or 10 years instead of 15, there's options out there and we're going to be considering those as we move forward, so, along with a lot of hope from the district on how we want to proceed, so.
Okay, that's what I thought you were getting to and, and right now...
Sorry if I was being coy about that.
No, that's okay, that's...
I'd say pretty big back, boy.
And it can change in six hours, I know, but at least we know where we stand as of this minute.
And I appreciate that question, Mrs. Burton, that clarification and Mr. Terrell had spoken with me that Plant Moran Cressa is taking a look at every single contract and every single project with the districts with whom they're working and just planning for every eventuality, which is part of the reason why we value having their representation as an owner's rep. And so I think it's appropriate for us to be prepared and if we don't need to use those contingency plans, we won't, but if we need to, then we, we've certainly understood in the past few days how dynamic the situation is and that very likely, you know, those kinds of considerations may have to be made.
Okay, thank you.
And just to top this off, I'd like to just throw out that, that we've done quite a bit of paving following... And just to top this off, I'd like to just throw out that, that we've done quite a bit of paving, um, following up our, our buildings that have been renovated through the 2013 bond. While we always will be maintaining our parking lots and doing paving projects, Nishiiro getting done, along with Jackson and Johnson, are the, the last three that really are getting, uh, some significant work. Now, there's still large pieces at, at our high schools, because they have such vast parking lots. But it, it's exciting to kind of think that we've gone through this, this process together for the last several years with regard to renovating buildings and doing so much paving work. So it's, it's been a very good, um, it's just been a, a great update for, for the buildings and for the district in total.
Anything else, Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to go back to, um, Churchill for just a minute. So, is there any, um, have we worked with our partners who did the originals? Like you said, some of the cars are bigger now than what they had, had striped the, the, the pavement for. Are they working with us on the costing, cost of doing this? Because.
There is, it was a legitimate, and, and we, we wanted to add more spots. That was the reason we, we restriped it. So you, you take something and obviously, there's only one way, we didn't get the parking lot any bigger. There's only one way to get more spots in it, and, and we angled them and shrunk them. And that was a conscious decision by the, the district. So no, it was not the engineer's fault. It was a decision we made, and, and in the reality of what occurred, Churchill had said, "We just are having too much difficulty." So we, we decided to, to go back and, and make it look right and have it cleared up. So, um, I don't, I wouldn't say, and, and I don't know that you would, would, I, I think you would agree, that it, it was our decision to stripe it as such. And as such, we have to sometimes live with, it's kind of like in your home, when you paint the living room, you know, a, a very bright color, and you look at it one day and go, "That might not have been my best decision."
Yeah, especially with young drivers, sometimes things that would work, uh, work in a normal parking lot, with young drivers don't work as well, so, lesson learned on that.
Yeah, I think it's a great question, Mrs. Frank, because we actually looked at that after, um, we experienced really challenges on day one. Um, so our directive, um, to the company was to draw it in order to provide more parking space for us, because we were, we were not expanding the lot. Um, they did draw that and give the district a couple of different options. We chose the option that we thought certainly would work the best. Um, the turn radius at the end of, uh, some of the, um, uh, some of the aisles, um, as well as the way that the, um, the space between the two. Um, the combination of those two, um, really proved, proved to be just, uh, too challenging, that we really felt like we actually not only needed to change it, but that we needed to change it in short order. Um, and did so, I think, within about a week of, of starting school. Um, so we absolutely looked back at that and, and took a look at, um, was that, you know, certainly our decision and at our request and our choice to sign off on that, and we did. Um, and we really thought that by gaining those additional spaces, that was something we needed there, especially when we have events, um, with the new P A. C. Um, what we found was it really, we felt like it would cause ongoing challenges, um, to both our students and quite frankly, even to our parents and staff, um, over time. So ideally, while, while we would have, um, liked to have been able to try that and experience it in real life and not just looking at a drawing and saying, "30 more spots, great." Um, what it did was it really just condensed it probably, um, a bit too much. And so that really, um, we, we take responsibility for that. Um, otherwise, we certainly would have gone back to our partner, um, on this project.
And, and so you've already fixed it, now you're just doing another layer of, so it's, it's aesthetic.
It's, it's aesthetic, yeah, and it, and it's, yeah, it, if you look at it, it's not a, a large, you know, a very large dollar amount compared to doing actual paving work. It, it is a, a seal coat and a paint.
Anything else? All right. Item.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, Franklin Flexible Furniture. Again, Mr. Francis.
Thank you. The Franklin Flexible Furniture, uh, gen item is a, a, um, purchase from, uh, Interior Environments, I E., we often just, you know them as. We've gotten quite a bit of, of furniture through them. And I'll take you back quickly, a couple of school years ago, uh, probably about a year and a half or so, when the secondary schools had their flexible furniture bond money. Uh, Franklin High School had taken one of their, um, computer labs, which is on the inner portion of the, of the building, and they converted it. They, they had, uh, you know, changed the carpet, and, and then they had also taken the, um, computers and removed some of the desktops, kept some desktops on the perimeter of the room. Put some really, really cool, functional furniture. Um, one of them in particular that jumps out at me is it actually plugs into the, the, the floor, because we had power in the floor in front of the computer lab. And then there's U S B ports into it, so you can charge your device as you're working. So if a student's working with a laptop or mobile device or could charge a phone. So they, they, they really made it an update, exactly what we were looking for on the flexible furniture project, was this updated, modern, um, student-friendly area that then classes were flocking to. So fast forward to now, and the, the building projects dollars at Franklin was that all buildings received. Franklin decided to replicate that room and the adjoining, one of the adjoining computer labs. So they're gonna now have two of those. There's a big demand, uh, from, from classroom teachers signing it up and taking their students there. So they're, they're literally, they called A I E. in and said, "Do this again here." So that's what they're doing through dollars. We bring this to you simply because of the dollar amount. Um, this is contract pricing as everything I E. brings to us is. It just, it went over the, the amount that, for board approval. So I, I, I bring to you for a recommendation to purchase for Franklin High School, this is their chosen, one of their chosen items with their, with their bond dollars.
Questions, comments? All right, excited to see their furniture.
Yeah.
Super exciting.
All right, item C is Randolph Team Rooms.
Um, we, we talked about this briefly at the last study, uh, study session in early March. So Randolph is, um, is going to, through I E. again, have basically, it's furniture, there are these beyond-wall products. So I, I struggle on what to title this, like, do I call it furniture? Do I call it, "We're getting walls"? I mean, it's just kind of hard to figure out a title. But essentially, it's a furniture product to, to create three rooms. Um, there was a, a section in the, um, portion of the, what was formerly the, the L M. C., that, uh, Mr. Drasvik and his team said, "We really have some ideas here. How do we, how do we do this without making a full-on remodel of this room?" And this was the product. So it really worked perfectly. Uh, Mr. Drasvik was frankly shocked at, at how good it, it all came together and how it looked. So this again is their bond, uh, project that they wished to do. The, the, uh, cabinet team and superintendent are supportive of this. So again, it's simply the dollar amount. We have it at 28, uh, what was the, the number?
Six sixty-two, sixty-five.
Twenty-eight, sixty-two, and sixty-five cents. So we come to you for approval to make this purchase. Again, contract pricing through I E.
Partitioned? No?
No.
They're called beyond-walls. It's from Steelcase, actually, it's, is the manufacturer, if you're familiar with Steelcase, out of, out of Grand Rapids. It's their product, they call them beyond-walls.
Okay.
If I just put that in the title, I thought everybody would have thought I was a little bit crazy, so. They're gonna use them as the team rooms in, in that area, so I just went with that. Any questions? Yes.
But it basically creates more classrooms. I mean, not huge classrooms, but it creates a workspace.
Intervention space and workspace, yes.
Yep, places where, and it's located such in the building where.
Breaks up the room.
Where, where the, the students who would be working with those teachers are literally right there in that hall. It's a nice, uh, close location, and, and it's a, it, it just works out very well for everybody. They're very excited, uh, to have this occurring.
So really, it's a nice way to, um, maximize and utilize open space, um, which is, which is great for some, um, for some learning opportunities. And the other side of the L M. C. is still all open. Um, but it really, what it does is it captures that space and makes it a bit more usable for student intervention and staff workspace.
Just a quick question, are these movable or will they be, um, stationary?
Similar, I would, the best way I can describe it is, and you're familiar with the walls that we have quite a bit of in this building, how they're, they're not movable. If you and I just wanted to go grab them and move around, but the professional installer can, can come and.
Reconfigure it.
Yes, reconfigure it.
Thank you.
Very, very similar, but a much nicer product. Ours is a little older.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Great. Thank you. That'll bring us to item D, Core Switch.
Uh, oh, I'm gonna invite, uh, Mr. Tim Clan, Administrator of Information Technology for the District, to join me on this item. So, the Core Switch, and I'm gonna give you a very, very simple exploration, and I'm gonna let my friend go from there. But the Core Switch, as I've mentioned in, um, in the memo, essentially is the main, I, I kind of call it the, the mother switch. We have multiple types of, of switches in this building and in all of our buildings that runs our, our network, I E. the internet and everything that we run on our network throughout the district. But this one particular switch, which technically is multiple switches, is where the outside internet comes to our district. And then it converts it and sends it back out on our network to all of our buildings and throughout this building. And that is eight years old, and, and it is in need of, of replacement. Now I'm gonna let Mr. Clan kind of talk about the, the idea behind this, uh, and, and why we need to replace it.
Uh, yeah, actually, a good, another good example is essentially that's the, the trunk of the tree, right? That feeds where everything comes in and it feeds out to all the different branches or buildings that we have in the district. So, um, like, uh, Mr. Francis said, it's approximately eight years old. At, at the time, we went to do the original bond renovation, it was only a couple of years old as we started that process. Uh, so I don't believe that it was looked at at that time to be something that needed to be replaced. But now it's gotten to that point, um, where we started having some, some issues with it. Five to seven years is probably, is about the extent of the life typically of one of these. So it is definitely time for it to, to be replaced.
And because of its, um, I guess, the necessity of it, but the necessity of it, we're like, the, it, it is that trunk of the tree that's feeding everything else. If it goes, the district goes down. All network runs through it. So that means not just the internet, but the, the, the photocopiers and, and the printers, everything that's, our P A.'s are on the network.
Phone systems.
Our phone systems on the network. All of those items nowadays, just about everything in the district is on our network, which is why it was so wonderful to, for, when the board approved the, the network fiber, um, uh, update. This too will mean we will have a very updated network within the district. And, um, we had three, was it two, no, I'm sorry, two. We had two bid responders, and essentially, one did not fulfill the bid specs. Uh, the, the company Sentinel is very familiar with the district. Uh, we've used them for, for quite many projects, and their name is probably familiar to you. And based upon the savings over the last six years with the bond, because items in I T., you know, oftentimes come down. We had some savings through good stewardship of, of the bond. We were able to have dollars left in the I T. Bond budget to afford to have the, the Core Switch replaced and even pick up a couple of the alternates that were in the bid specs originally.
Mr. Clan, I just wanted to clarify, so you said generally the Core Switch, um, the useful life is about five to seven years? And am I correct that this is, that these are over eight years old?
Yes.
And they were not replaced as part of the, um, bond work?
Correct.
Oh, and on top of that, it is an item that is eligible for E-rate, uh, rebates, which we are currently pursuing on top of that. So the, the amount of forty-nine, nine thirty-six is all the alternates as well as the contingency, but does not count any E-rate dollars we get back. And we would estimate at this point, what was the, um, do we have an estimate of what the E-rate rebate would be?
Around 50%, I believe.
It'd be around 50% even. So this is pretty good timing, uh, for us. Because E-rate is coming to the end, correct?
Great, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mr. Clan, the, uh, the one alternate, um, is for the, uh, deduction for the type of warranty accepted. Can you explain the, the warranty that we're getting?
Yes, so i- if you'll notice, we, we did still go with the five-year warranty. Uh, what it is, is they, the base price includes that company, um, maintaining or warranting the work and them connecting to other switches. So this Core Switch connects to other switches throughout the district. Is that, I mean, that kind of makes sense. There's no guarantee when they do sell this to a, to a customer, that the other switches in the network are also going to be Cisco switches. They could be other brands, Netgear, et cetera. So their base bid or base pricing includes them working with the other brands of switches. Since we're all Cisco, they give us a discount, uh, for the fact that we're using all Cisco equipment, which makes it easier for them to maintain and manage.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that's, Mrs. Frank.
Just really quick, Mr. Clan, I just wanted to, I forget if we mentioned this earlier, but I know that your staff has really worked hard in terms of getting PCs out to everybody, uh, Chromebooks, not PCs, um, who wanted them. And I know that that was a, a big undertaking on your part. And not only did we get them out, but we also, I believe your staff set up a, a hotline for parents who are having prob- problems with the Chromebooks, once they get them home for these three weeks. And so I just wanted to, I, I forgot if we mentioned that earlier, but I, I wanted to thank your staff for it, because there's nothing like getting your kid a Chromebook and not being able to use it for some reason, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to item E, uh, which is, which is the desktop computer replacement, uh, again, part of the 2013 bond.
We have desktop computer replacements, and we, um, there is a, a, a list out of, of the desktops we are talking about. Um, we had replaced in 2014, the first round, we, we keep saying replaced, because we've had desktop computers for a long time. But with the 2013 bond, in 2014, there's the first round of desktop computers, and that was, was replacing administrators, secretaries. All of the custodial offices and building supervisors have, have a desktop, the building management system, they run through that, et cetera. Um, we have folks in this building, et cetera, and as well as the beginnings of, of some computer labs that we're looking to, to replace out that are now, well, six years old and, and, and running. So it's the first round of the replacement cycle on the desktop computers. I'll let Mr. Clan describe the differences and, and, and what we're gonna be ordering based upon what's new nowadays versus replacing six-year-old desktops, and, and they do look quite different.
Thanks. Uh, the, the new machines, uh, the majority of them, the, the largest number that we're looking at there are a 24-inch, um, they're all-in-one computer now, so it looks essentially like a monitor, but it's got everything built into it. Uh, these also come with a five-year, uh, full, full warranty for damage and, uh, just regular malfunctions or, or problems that they have. And it's onsite next business day, so they'll come out, if they can't fix it, they'll replace it, um, at that time. Uh, so basically, we're guaranteed to have solid functional machines for the full five years, uh, that we'll have them. The, um, the second type of machine that we're looking at is, is something mainly for administrators, that'll be a slightly larger monitor, uh, but it'll have a small, uh, compute unit, about the size of a D V. D. drive, uh, that will either attach to the back or, or sit on the desk next to it. So as opposed to the larger desktop units that we're typically used to having, this will be a much smaller unit. Um, in addition, those monitors have a built-in, uh, docking station. I don't know if any of you had laptops in the past, where you had a big docking station and you would slide it in and click it and lock it and all that type of stuff. Um, that newer monitor has a docking station built into it that connects with just a single U S B. C. cable from the laptop to the monitor, and all of that's built into that monitor. So if at some point in the future, we decide to go with all laptops for our administrators or building administrators, uh, those, those screens will be ready to do that as well.
And those desktops for, for, um, administrators, there's a, a little bit difference in, in the functionality. We have a, uh, some software that administrators use that our other staff don't use. One that really comes to mind is like reviewing the videos, having the, the capability to, to, uh, to, to review the videos with different software that come from our, our camera-staffed buildings, uh, things like that. So overall, we're looking at, um, approximately 1,100 machines. We have that, those approximates in my memo, I apologize, I shouldn't have read them that. We hadn't had the final, um, the, the, the final quote yet. But our numbers on the, uh, subtotal is going to be 1,129,495 dollars and 35 cents. And these all come from the R M. C., which is satisfying the board's requirement to bid.
All right, Mrs. Burton.
Um, yes. I'm not sure, Mr. Francis, if you were really answering my question at the very end there or not, uh, but why are we going with desktop, desktops as opposed to laptops? And I'm not second-guessing your decision, because you're far more of an expert on that than I am, but just curious, with more and more folks using laptops, um, are they, are, are the laptops simply not capable of handling the volume that some of our administrators have on there or what?
Typically, what you run into, a, a desktop is, or is going to be less expensive for the processing power that you get. When you're trying to fit everything into a laptop, typically, you're gonna pay a bit of a premium for that smaller form factor.
Okay.
Number one. Number two is, um, a large majority of these are, are like secretarial, support staff, uh, lab machines, things like that, that wouldn't necessarily lend themselves to being a laptop.
Okay.
For the most part, they're, they're not somebody who necessarily gets up and moves around the district on a regular basis. For the most part. They're, they're not somebody who necessarily gets up and moves around the district on a regular basis. We do currently tend to provide laptops to the staff that do move around. A lot of our student services, support staff, a lot of our administrators have laptops. So it kind of, we're trying to base it based, based on their, their job.
Okay.
Requirements. So for this particular order, the majority of it is all, all desktops.
So it's actually less, less expensive to put desktops on. I was assuming the opposite.
You can, you can get a laptop.
Yeah.
That runs the same computer hardware and, and will get you the same functionality. But obviously, the translation of it comes at a premium means they're more expensive.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. But they're called laptops, but they're totally different than the old.
Oh, yeah.
Big cumbersome desktop.
Yeah, these are desktops, but there's no tower.
There's no tower, right.
Yeah. You literally, the, we have a couple of them running up in IT as, as testers. And, and the one that is, that the secretary of staff, et cetera, will, will have and, and that would go into labs, when you look at it, it's a monitor. You'll start looking around for wires, where do they go to the tower? There is no tower. That's the whole thing. The only difference on, on the administrative computers are, and like Mr. Klan had mentioned, it looks like there's a little CD or DVD player that's like this big sitting next to it. That's the whole thing.
Yeah.
It is amazing how the differences have.
And some of them are right on the back of the monitors.
Yeah. They have the right kind of mounts, you can mount them right to the back. They even build them now where they actually slide right into the stand, so it'll, it'll stay in place right there. But these also have touchscreen monitors. The monitors are all touchscreen as well.
And I noted in, in the bid, we've got wireless mouse and keyboard. Is the keyboard wireless as well?
We, so standard, we get a wired keyboard and mouse typically just because of the issues that we typically run into with battery replacements and troubleshooting issues that people start to have when they don't necessarily realize what's going on, that the batteries need to be replaced, but they start having issues and we start getting calls. But we did put a few wireless keyboards and mice on here just in case there were certain instances that required that somebody needed to have a wireless keyboard and mouse to go with the unit that they had. That's why I think on the last page, there's a, you'll see a couple of.
Correct.
Wireless keyboards and mice.
Yeah, they weren't big numbers.
Okay. Anything else? All right. That concludes item E. We're gonna move on to item F, Chromebook purchase.
Okay. The Chromebook purchase, and this was our conversation again at the March study session. There's new pricing that will come out and I believe we're looking at mid-March, or mid-April, right? Okay. And, and that could potentially also be, do we know yet, is there word in the street that it is a new model? Because I think.
No, the, I believe the model's gonna remain the same, but the pricing.
Pricing will, will change. So we, instead of buying them right now, we want to wait the extra few weeks, get the new pricing, again, RMC pricing. However, because we don't have that pricing out yet, we want to come to the board and get approval on a not-to-exceed number that IT has looked through, counted out the Chromebooks that we need, given a really good estimate, and then I took it and I rounded it up just to make sure that there weren't any, any issues with regard to, you know, saying, oh goodness, we can't quite get them for some reason. But, but that's actually a, a very good number that we'll be able to get the Chromebooks to replace that first round of Chromebooks, the 2016s, that are coming to their end of support. And the reason we're doing this and not waiting to get through April was, as discussed previously, we want to be there on day one, when the new pricing comes out, get our quote and have the PO moving so that we can be, because, because all the other districts around Michigan are going to be looking to do a purchase as well. So we want to try to get ourselves in the front of that line as best as, as possible. So I appreciate the board working with us on, on this type of purchase.
All right.
One thing I do want to jump in with is, in my memo, I mentioned Chromebooks, some Chrome carts, but then the, to have Presidio do the work of rewiring current carts that we have. And that would be to fit, so instead of taking the expenditure of a, a brand-new cart, we can have them for less do the work of, of getting the appropriate wiring for charging in each slot of our current carts.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Phil, how confident are you that the not-to-exceed number is going to be enough?
Super.
Okay.
Because the number he gave me, I rounded it up. I just wanted to make sure, I'm, I'm just being very transparent. He had a one-point-five da-da-da, and I said, let's just round it to be safe. So I, I think it's definitely below that.
Because I want to make sure, from a timing standpoint, that if, if it wasn't enough and you had to come back, how much time would we lose in, in the ordering?
No, I think we're both.
Yeah.
Confident enough? Okay.
My suggestion, thank you President Johnson for considering that. My suggestion would be we would just limit the number of Chromebooks at just under thirty-eight hundred, rather than hold off the purchase.
Correct.
We are anxious to get these ordered and get them in. It takes quite a bit to then not only get the products, and some of which has been delayed because of everything going on in the world, but then also to prepare them. To be deployed takes quite a while.
Does.
And we are desirous of getting these out to our schools to start the year or as close to that as possible. So we would recommend if, if for some reason it came in significantly different, that we would purchase as many as possible under that not-to-exceed number with approval of the board.
Correct. That'd be the variable that we would move. We wouldn't move the dollar amount, we'd, we'd move the number. And, and frankly, just to, to Mrs. Oquist's point, this, the Presidio is, is what I would call like a white glove service. It, it is not, we're not going to get these machines, open up the box like at home and, and plug them in and say, hey, I've got my computer. They're going to get received and run through, they tag them, they, they inventory them. They said they do everything, they're going to set up the carts. Everything gets done so that they can show up in our, in our district, ready to go.
And it's the same company that's done it for us with each of the other ones. So they're very familiar with our buildings, with our process. I mean, they knew exactly what we were looking for. The only difference this time is that they'll be pulling the old carts back and repurposing them. And we'll be buying a few additional carts to separate the numbers out a little bit.
I just want to, I appreciate that you're rewiring the older carts because, I mean, I'm sure the, the cart itself is still in, they're probably still in decent condition. So why, why send those off and, and get new ones?
They were a very nice, solidly built cart. And I think we kind of anticipated from the beginning that we'd be able to use them at least for a second round.
Yeah, that's good.
So, and they, and they are designed to be wired with whatever adapter comes with that particular device at the time. So it, it makes it.
Excellent. Well, thank you. That's helpful.
Great. Anything else? All right. That includes, concludes item F then. Thank you, Mr. Klan, for joining us. Item G is high school competitive gym scoreboard. Bid results, Mr. Francis.
Thank you very much. We are looking to replace the, in the competition gyms of all three high schools, their, their scoreboards. So we put out for bid and on the bid tab, you can see that we had three respondents, two of which did not meet the, the, the bid specs. Essentially, we bid a particular board and they came in and put in bids for a board that we did not ask for. So Daktronics, some of you might be very familiar with Daktronics. We have Daktronic boards. They're one of the major names in, in, in scoreboards. Anywhere from rec center scoreboards to, to high schools, all the way up to major universities and, and NFL, MBA, et cetera. We will have them all installed at the three high schools, you know, based upon the, the, well, I normally say the schedule is of whatnot for, for each high school. We're going to probably be fairly open in the coming, you know, coming time. So we'll, we'll get it in an appropriate manner. And I, I would say that even, as long as they're willing to work, there, there wouldn't be, as long as the companies have shut down to construction, et cetera. It's not a major construction problem, problem, I'm sorry, project. You know, we could, we could have Mr. Lau get that, that person in or have the building supervisor, who will be doing building checks periodically anyway, let them in and, and have them done and not disrupt any students or, or even the fact that we have closed buildings. We did speak with the three athletic directors and, and had them choose their colored board. These boards will all go LED. These will be wireless controllers, very nice setup. Nothing overly fancy or, or wild. It's not going to like the Dallas Cowboys stadium scoreboard or anything like that, but a very nice replacement that they're excited for. Our boards currently in the three high schools, they range in age. But the newest one is Franklin's, which is, I think, about sixteen years old, going up to about twen- almost twenty-five years old. So they're, 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 yeah, and they're starting to fail. And the parts for them is the big concern, is that you can't get those anymore. So it's time to go with the, the update, those little light bulbs on your ass. So if there's any questions?
All right. Scoreboard questions going once, five minutes, all right.
Sorry.
Yes.
Any, any, any claims for the middle school scoreboard?
They were already done. Yes. They, they also were needed, but the price of a, a, a middle school scoreboard was, you could see this barely came over the, the threshold for all three buildings, so, yes.
Mrs. Frank got that one in right as the clock, as the shot clock was expiring.
The gavel was falling.
It was falling, yeah.
All right. Item H is high school competitive gym floor sand and refinish.
Our, our three high school competition gyms have not had their floors. We screen them, we, we, we fix them, we maintain them. But to actually sand them, the recommendation is generally approximately eleven years. As you saw from my memo, we're now into fifteen and beyond for those floors. It, it is very much time to do those, those floors. I, I think I put the three renderings in your packet. They looked dynamite. Mrs. Oquist and I and Mr. Willenberg were all in the room with the three principals, the three athletic directors, and the gentleman from Foster Floors running through the renderings on his laptop on a big screen. The ADs got a chance to say, move this over there, turn that volleyball line from gray to red, let me see. It was really, really cool. And I tell you, this is where floors are going. Levoni Public Schools competition gym floors, they're going to look very different than what they look like now, but this is the way it's going. Less paint, more stain for color, and that will give it longer life. The paint is going to, those floors are going to move, they're going to bounce. By definition, there's, there's a give to a gymnasium floor and that paint won't hold up as well as that stain. And it's just a clean, sharp, at least my opinion, and it seemed the opinion of the dozen or so people all in the room looking at it, that, that they look really sharp. The ADs and the principals are very excited about this project. The ADs have been talking with, with Mr. Lau and myself for a couple of years now, saying, you know, it's, it's really got to get done and now is the time.
And they're striped for both basketball and for volleyball?
They're striped for basketball, volleyball, yep. They, they look real sharp. They have their, their logos on there, the center court logo, a couple of side logos and the, and the two end lines with like, for example, you know, Stevenson on one end and Spartans on another. Very sharp.
And they all got to, you'll see each one is a little different where the volleyball lines are, where the, the three-point lines are, et cetera. And so it's always nice, just like we did with the football fields, to have a standard and then to allow for customization at the school level. And so I think that provides just yet another sense of pride in, in the work that's being done. So these are very much needed. It's something as we've been able to provide some other updates to our athletic facilities with the sinking fund. This was one area that had not been touched and for many years has been very much in need. So we're, we're excited to bring this to you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. In, in looking at the three renderings, Phil.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just noticed that on, on both Churchill and Franklin, it's got the school name on one end and the, the team name, like Franklin Patriots. But Stevenson's, is Stevenson on both ends?
You're right. This is because they put the Spartans in the main of the floor. If you look, they have their Spartans on the floor.
With Spartans on the floor, I'm, I'm assuming that's the way it will be.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They decided was that instead of having a secondary logo, because Franklin has the, the Fast F and the Patriot head and Churchill has their LC and the Shield. So they kind of have those, those secondary logos. Stevenson, their secondary logo, if there is one, is just an S. But they chose to actually have the full Spartan and just kind of ha- just like you see it. Stevenson, Stevenson at the, at the inbound sides and then on the floor itself, two Spartans. And that's how it's going to look and, and that was what they chose to do.
Yeah, I, that's what I was thinking is prob- I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't.
Yeah, it's, I, I liked it actually. If it's just the S, it would have been great. But this takes it to a different, for, for me, your eye gets drawn to it.
And the icon, or the icon, but the logo in the center will be facing the home, the home crowd in each of the competition gyms.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
To be, to be fair, Churchill's does not, at a basketball game. For some reason, they've always, Mr. Hague was talking about this that day.
Yeah, they do it the other, for the other uses of the gym.
They, they just put their home side on the opposite side of the other two schools. But as we all know, Churchill's gymnasium and bleacher setup is very different than the Franklin and Stevenson setup. But we just, he brought it up and he said, ours is, our, our LC will be backwards to our home crowd. But forever and ever, that's simply the way they've chosen to be, to have their home fans on, on, on that side. And I'm, I'm not going to pretend to dig into it. It's history. It's something they've been doing for a long time.
Mr. Francis, you said these are, we're seeing these.
Yes.
They have a certain amount, number of sands in their lifetime usually, how many, what?
So we had, we, we had Foster Floors take an inspection of them and it looks to be like there's a couple more sandings in them.
Okay.
So that means that, e- even if this was the last sanding, that means we should have, the, the way we've been doing it, twelve to fifteen years still out of, you know, a freshly sanded floor. But we believe there could even be another one after that.
Great. All right. Mrs. Burner?
I may have missed this, but what is the timeframe that we're looking at doing this work if it's approved?
This is going to be, well, the plan is to be as much summer work as, as be done. And what they want to do is, and, and they're going to give up, all this sounds different now when we're in this situation, but. So we'll probably be back though by the time this comes in. But the three athletic directors said that they would be able to, to kind of close down their gym for the last couple of weeks of the school year and just use their field houses with classes and whatnot to be able to get in there and get started. Because instead of doing a gymnasium, a gymnasium and a gymnasium, soup to nuts, Foster Floors wants to come in and sand all three of them at one time. And that would sort of be that early phase because they get very busy in the summer. So they figure if they can get them sanded when school is still in, there's no smell, there's no, there's nothing wrong. You can walk on it, it's not a problem. It's just that work then is done. And then when school lets out, they'll get in there and they'll make a rotation of, of then finishing them and, and getting the stains on them and, 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 yep, yep, in the final year.
This is not, this is not our, my call. Certainly, we're our call as, as a board. This is more of an operations issue. But just a thought, if, if this company, if, we are, we are voting on this later this evening?
Correct.
Is that correct? If this is approved tonight, if they have the three weeks right now with empty buildings, might they be interested in going through and, and, and doing a soup to nuts and, and getting one or two out of the way to alleviate some of that summer crunch? Because I know the, our, our athletes have already been notified that if this does become approved and this work is done, they're going to have to stay off that for a while this summer. So just, just a thought, and it's not really a board issue, so you don't even need to get back to us, back to me on that.
Because it's a really good idea and it all would be contingent upon.
If they could knock off one or two or?
You know, it, it, obviously, there's some unknowns in our, in our future.
Lot of unknowns.
Starting it would, would, and then coming back would be more problematic. But I like, I like the thought and we'll make a little note of it and have some conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else? Great. That concludes item, sorry.
H.
We're on H. Now we're on item I, which is boiler replacements.
I promise I won't run out of alphabet letters tonight. So we have.
Mrs. Burner had a question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me a moment. Um, as I look at the, this item that's, that we're coming up to right now, the company that my family is involved in does work with some of the companies that are listed in this. So I will be abstaining from any discussion or voting on this item.
Thank you. And, and if I can, before I jump into the letter H, A through G, and I have not said it each time, but all of those I'd like for tonight, thank you. I apologize. I, I should have been saying that all along. Okay, thank you, thank you. So letter, actually, we're up to letter, letter I. I just pointed the wrong thing in my little military, it doesn't make any sense. Okay, letter, letter I is boiler replacement. This is something that we've now done at, at a couple of different phases, if you recall. And I'll take everyone back to the, the Frost was, Boilers was the, the pilot program. We got a couple winters' worth of readings out. And then last year, we came back and did several buildings. This year, we have five buildings that we are recommending the award of to Cistemp Incorporated, who actually had done them previously. Cistemp does a lot of work in, in the district. They are a very reputable company and we do like the work that they do. They had, they were, they, they were low responsible for a vast majority, four of them, and the largest one being Franklin. Franklin's still running their original steam system. And then we have Detroit Boiler, who was actually low at the. And then, we have Detroit Boiler, who was actually low at the Emerson Middle School Boiler Project. So, I do have two recommendations here, one for, obviously, a much larger portion of the total project, four out of the five, and Franklin is just a big project. And then Emerson, again, being Detroit Boiler. All minimum bid specs and were met. Post-interview with the companies, and frankly, Detroit Boiler is a company that we have not used. We would like to use them on a single project, it sort of plays out very nicely for us, for them to do one building, be able to have, put their attention towards that, and then we can work with them, and we're always willing and excited to have another vendor, another company that can do repairs, another company that can bid on projects. So, we are actually anticipating, looking forward to working with them, to see how everything runs through. But we have, in totality here, we're looking at Coolidge, Roosevelt, Riley, and Franklin for $1,510,000, and that would be with SysTemp. And then at Emerson with Detroit Boiler, $245,461.85. And we do have, when I get to the, I won't get into it right now, I was gonna talk about contingency, but we'll deal with that in the next, yep. So, any questions?
All right. Great, you were gonna talk about contingency?
I can, I'll have that put into the cap sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's built in.
Great.
So, I asked for that to be on the voting, the special meeting this evening.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Item J is bus wash replacement.
I can't begin to tell you, this sounds so silly, but the excitement around the bus wash replacement by so many people. Yeah, it is exciting. So, just for those who will watch this from home, as mundane as it sounds to talk about a bus wash system, our current system is 25 years old and does not function anywhere near as it was originally installed. The undercarriage was abandoned many years ago, which means where the most salt and dirt and mud is on our buses, underneath it, off the road, is not being adequately cleaned off. Our current system has been failing. We have many times where mechanics need to come out and actually by hand move some of the parts, because it's not a touchless system, it actually runs over the roller over the bus. We have buses that have, for students with disabilities, an air conditioning unit on top, they actually have to come out and by hand lift the arms over it, et cetera. Our mechanics spend time working on the current bus wash. So, when you go dollar for dollar, it's not just what's the operation of a cost per wash, which the new one is low, it's something like $2.81 a wash, or $2.18, I might have transposed those two numbers. But it's about the quality of the wash, it's about our mechanics working off of a bus, having to come off a bus to come work on the bus wash, all of these types of dollars in operational cost is what's at play here. So, when you compare operational costs of the new one to the current one, it's a win operationally. And another part of that is the fact that the buses will be, quite frankly, cleaner. We're gonna have a full undercarriage again, it's gonna clean it very well. I've seen videos of the bus run through it. We had our building, or, I'm sorry, our mechanics supervisor, as well as our administrator of facilities and operations, go to Wald Lake, they had a very similar system put in recently, they talked with the folks there, they watched it, you know, be used, et cetera. And then, sort of like the icing on the cake here, is that because it's a touchless system, all of our other maintenance vehicles can be run through this system. So, right now, we can't run through our vans and our trucks, et cetera. And this, we'll be able to put our, all of our maintenance vehicles, as well as our buses, through it, because it's a completely no-touch system. So, I am bringing, it is, it's from the State of Michigan Ideal Person Consortium, so it takes care of the bid requirement, and I submit to you that this might be one of the more exciting things that's happened to us, and that just, I don't know if that speaks towards us or just the bus wash system.
I think this is fantastic, like you said, it'll help alleviate salt and debris from underneath our brand-new buses that we have already.
Protecting the investment is what we've been working on.
Correct. My other, my question is, it will fit in the current configuration that we have?
They came out, this is a, again, white glove, the electric, the plumbing, all of the work is in that bid. I know there's multiple pages in that proposal that I sent you, but...
And they have it covered if it's in?
Yep, they have it covered.
Great.
Yep, Hydrochem Systems is out of Caledonia, they came out, they took a look, they gave us all the numbers.
Was there a warranty included, or no? How does that work?
I'd have to confirm that, but generally speaking, anything new, there's gonna be, on parts...
Yeah, certain, a year or two or something.
Yeah, machinery, you get a warranty. But this is something that's been in several local districts, and even in neighboring states. When we first started looking, it was like, oh, there's one in Ohio, and I thought, we're not going to Ohio to look at that, and then suddenly Wald Lake.
Oh, has one, okay. I think it's great.
Just to note, Mrs. Bradford, the warranty is on page six of eight of the Hydrochem Systems quote.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, you'll find the verbiage for the warranty on that page.
Oh, I see it, okay, thank you.
It says here it fits SUVs of board members.
No comment? So, again, you know, we're excited, protect the investment, and also get our mechanics back into the garage and not, and, you know, and out of the bus wash.
Mrs. Burton?
What's the timeframe, assuming this is approved?
Excuse me, we would have to schedule up with them, I don't have an exact timeframe yet. We've sort of got this all together, and then I've been kind of...
Have you been dizzy?
Yeah. I kinda went a little sideways, so I will make note and get that information for you. Do you recall the timeframe?
Do I remember?
We did have conversation before everything started, the plan was to schedule it for May, so before the end of the school year, and it would get in for this budget year.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that'll be altered now in light of everything, but that was the original plan, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, similar to our previous conversation, I was wondering if this is something that, I have no idea how long it takes to install the bus wash, but if this is something that could be done during our three-week hiatus and our additional week of spring break, then it may be easier for them to get in and out while we are not moving. But again, nothing you need to get back with Hassan, just a thought.
And now that Allison brought it up, that was part of the reason with regard to wanting to get it done now before we got into the new year.
Sure.
All right, great, anything else? Item K then, DTE conversion of light poles to LED.
You have a list of the properties, district properties, that I had placed into the packet, and these, and the number of lamps, i.e. poles, that will be replaced. So, we have 19 different sites, and we've been getting DTEs, DT out to replace these. We lease these poles from DTE, so we pay for them, they are DTEs, that's why DT is working with us, and this would be the final grouping that we would have converted to LED. One of the big draws, this is really two big draws, but in totality, it turns into one, which is the payback. DT is donating the labor, and the buyback on the savings from our energy bill from, and what we pay on these is a little over a year, it's less than a year and a half. It's basically, if you did the math straight up, it's like one year, four months, so I think in my memo I said in less than a year and a half. The lights that are currently in there are technology from the 60s and 70s, maybe even earlier, things like mercury vapor or high-pressure sodium, those would be taken out, which have more of a brownish tinge. So, when you get the LEDs in there, you're using less lumens, and you're getting a brighter light, a more daylight type of light being shown in its place. So, we are, this is something that we've been trying to work on and get completed out for a while. DTE as our partner is involved, and I recommend this as a conversion to be completed.
Okay, questions? Mrs. Jarvis?
More of a comment, really, I'm very pleased to see buildings here that we don't use for day-to-day educational purposes included, because those parking lots are still used for other purposes, for example, Dickinson and Bentley and Marshall. And so, it's nice to see that we are cognizant of safety for people in all of our properties, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, great. Moving on to item L, Churchill Domestic Hot Water System.
That sounds interesting.
Opposed to its foreign hot water.
So, the hot water system, very quickly, at Churchill is, basically, the reason we have it listed as a system is because it's not, even though it's made up of like three 100-gallon tanks, it is in totality a system, so to replace it, you do the whole thing. It's running at about 50% capacity. I'm sure there are people in certain wings of Churchill that never knew that Churchill actually was meant to have hot water. So, we are going to remedy that. This system literally is running at about 50% capacity. So, this is a sinking fund project that we wanted to get going on, and it's $38,000 was the low bid, again, by SysTemp Corporation, who, again, we're familiar with. And this is a project that once, you know, if the board does approve in a vote this evening, we, yeah, we wanna get working on.
Okay, comments, questions?
When do we get indoor plumbing?
Slow down, Mr. Johnson, one thing at a time. All right, thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes building and site, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Oh, yep, it does, psych me out there for a second.
Is that the same company as the boiler replacement? Okay, because it said SysTemp, okay, so that's the same company, doing the...
The boilers as well as the...
Is the hot water? Okay, thank you, got it.
Okay.
If that's... President Johnson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Burton?
Can we make certain, Mrs. Bonnefield, that it does say SysTemp when we vote on that? I don't want to get into any legal issue with...
I'll confirm the resolution.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, that concludes our building and sites, so we'll move on to item five, our policy committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Burton.
Thank you. We are going to take a look at some of the policies that we are looking at revising. There's a section of a number of board bylaws with minor updates. We will not be bringing the first on our agenda, BBD, this evening, that had some revisions, and it was not quite ready yet. We will begin with BCAC, and Mrs. Oquiss, would you like to address these?
Certainly, thank you, Mrs. Burton. If you'll take a look at board bylaw, BCAC, we are making our way through. It is two pages, the content is two pages just to list each of the bylaws. So, we are, Mrs. Burton and I are making our way through these. For this, under Board Operations, this is entitled Special Meetings. And so, the first change is under the bullet points, and the, we're revising that sentence to read, "Service as above prescribed may be made by a member of the board or any employee of the district." Previously, it just stated "any employee," so certainly, I think the understanding would've been of Levoni Public Schools, but we thought we would make that clear. We then, in the next paragraph, gave a strike-through to when proper notice has been given to the public, because when we list very clearly what the timelines are in the bullet points with regard to the service of notices, and felt that had been adequately covered in those previous areas. In that next paragraph, it, we changed the word foregoing to aforementioned. So, if the aforementioned procedure is followed, and if a notice of a meeting has been posted or published at least 18 hours prior to the meeting, a quorum present can conduct business legally. And then, the strike-through of special meetings of the board shall be conducted in accordance with the policy established for regular meetings. And so, again, we were, we clearly outlined in the opening of this policy, as well as the bullet points, that, and so, we felt that, again, that was not a necessary piece of the policy. We also updated the legal reference at the bottom of the page, as we have continued to do as we looked through each of these bylaws.
Are there any questions on this bylaw? Mrs. Frank?
So, when I read through it, I was just, it struck me as services of the notice shall be by all of them? Like, should it say services of the notice shall be by one of the following? Right, because we're not doing all of them, we're not delivering the notice...
At the very top.
It says "or," it says "or" at the end of both one and two, but it doesn't say "or" at the end of three.
Does everyone see where we're, what we're talking about? After the first main paragraph, the second line, or the first line of what would be a second paragraph, "services of the notices shall be by..."
Maybe one of the following?
But the "or" takes care of that.
But if it just makes it a little bit more clear, we could still leave the "or" in there. So, we could add one of, we could add one of the following.
Shall be by one of the following?
Yes.
Yes.
And we can, and then we can still leave the "or" after number one, after number two. We can add "or" to number three.
Yes, I would think that would be appropriate.
So, may I add "by" and then add "one of the following methods"?
Yes.
Sure, so that'd be good.
And add "or" after number three?
Yes. Anything else on that bylaw?
Okay, next bylaw is the BCAE, Public Hearings.
Thank you, I'm going to go ahead and, since it is one sentence long, just read through this, and it will, it will have that addition make more sense. This is in relation to Public Hearings. "All public hearings shall be conducted in accordance with the law, and shall provide for proper notice, including a meeting agenda, and an orderly process for the public to be heard." Mrs. Burton and I added the phrase "including a meeting agenda," because as we reviewed the guidelines that are required for a public meeting, you are required to have an agenda.
Any questions on this? And just for the benefit of the public, the public hearings differ from a board meeting. This is specifically for, I believe, our lunch program requires one. There are a couple, two or three times in the year...
Couple of times in the year where we need to do that.
That we're required to have a public hearing. They're typically not highly attended, but they are a separate activity from a board meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda is BCAF, Study Sessions and Committees of the Whole.
Thank you, and under BCAF, this is, also falls under Board Operation. We added to Study Sessions Committees of the Whole, because the way our board functions, we meet regularly in the Committee of the Whole, and thought that it would make sense for these provisions to be applicable to those meetings, as well as study sessions. Again, relatively short, so I'll read through that. "The Board of Education may devote part of a regular or special meeting, or schedule a Committee of the Whole or Study Session for the purpose of receiving information and discussing matters pertinent to the school district." Then we struck through the words "through presentations, special projects, or other matters," because we really have an extraordinarily thorough process, where we cover information in the study session, we cover it in-depth in the committee meeting, and then we review it again in the regular meeting before voting. Sometimes, those meetings are combined into one for Boards of Education across the state, and so, because we utilize them as a completely separate meeting, we utilize mediums other than presentations or special projects or other matters. We do that as a part of our regular course of business, it's not a special event to have a Committee of the Whole meeting. And then, we added "any Committee of the Whole or Study Session that is not part of a regular or special meeting must be posted in accordance with the provisions of law. No official action may be taken at a Committee of the Whole or Study Session. Minutes will be kept and made available upon request."
Any questions with this, comments? Okay, go on to B, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield?
So, I've answered my question, that's all.
Okay, all right. We're on to BCB, Procedures During Meetings, sorry.
Thank you, Board Operations, Procedures During Meetings. Mrs. Burton and I reviewed this, and we did not see any recommended changes. It was last updated in March 20th of 2017, when we added District Update from the Superintendent. We renamed that and moved that on the agenda from the end until part of the communications portion of the meeting. The remainder still is very appropriate. The remainder still is very appropriate, and we are not recommending any changes to you at this time.
Any questions? Mrs. Frank?
Just, there are times when we are approving somebody for a position or what have you, that we do move Personnel Matters up. Because it says "regular meetings generally shall be as follows", does that cover us enough?
Yes, exactly. Yes, that verbiage is very helpful.
Yes, that's exactly why we phrased it that way when we did it in 2017, for, and for that very example.
Okay, perfect.
And the other piece is, we do not adopt the agenda. We adopt a board meeting schedule. So therefore, we are able to, as a point of privilege, make a change on the agenda with the approval of the presiding Board President, without having to go through a formal vote on that.
The next is BCBC, Preparation of the Agenda.
What we reviewed in this section, the first and last paragraph remain the same. The middle paragraph is in reference to agendas, and it says "Agendas shall be forwarded or mailed to the members of the board no later than the Friday preceding the meeting." This is in regard to the preparation of our regular board meeting agendas. It states "and other regular interested parties, including the media." That was a process utilized years ago before we had Board Book, and all of this information is available to anyone. And it is always available prior to the board meeting. So, really, that is a moot point, because we now have all of those agendas and all of the backup information, part of Board Book, for every meeting preceding the meeting, but we also keep it for multiple years prior.
Mrs. Oakley?
Yes.
For those who don't know, Board Book is...
Oh, thank you. Board Book is our online portal off of our website that hosts all of our board meeting materials, including agendas, committee, meeting videos, packets, et cetera. Thank you. We did state "the agenda shall be available on the district website prior to the meeting", and so that, that's where we are referencing the, the access on Board Book.
Any questions on this? Okay. And Mrs. Oakley, so do you have another policy that you wanted us to take a look at, or, or not for this evening?
Not for this evening.
Okay, we're all set then. That concludes policy, and although, those are all going on to the next, next meeting for, I don't think it's tonight, though.
It is not, it will be at the next regular meeting.
The next regular meeting for our first reading.
Yes.
Right, okay, thank you. That concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton, that takes us to item six, Personnel, and Mrs. Frank.
We have nothing to update?
We do not.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, that will take us to item seven, our Legislative Committee, Mrs. Bradford.
I believe we have nothing to update, correct?
No, other than to state that we're following legislative updates on a daily basis and as it relates to our district and district functioning. And so we continue to maintain very close contact with all of the governmental agencies as it relates to our schools and COVID-19.
All the happenings, thank you.
We still don't have 100%, it is a fluid situation, but information on, on days of school and that sort of thing, we are still, the, the, we've not gotten guidance yet from them, right? From the state in terms of what days are going to be forgiven, what days are going to be...
That's correct. So the legislature will be in session, I believe, tomorrow. And I know that there are bills that are being considered in that regard, but we've not received any specific guidance on that.
So I just think that, that's a piece of, people want answers, and I don't think we have them to give yet. In some of those cases, we don't have the answer.
Right, which is part of really why we've really been very thoughtful and considered in our responses to questions regarding a calendar and days, et cetera, was because we've been really looking to the MDE and the state for guidance on that, as well as our state organizations.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley, that'll take us to item eight, Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Jarvis.
There are no updates at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, that brings us to the end of that agenda. We are going to take just a brief break and we'll be back to take up our special meeting. So, thank you very much, and we're concluded at this point.
Good evening again and welcome to our special meeting of March 16th, 2020. I'm going to ask Mrs. Bonnefield go ahead and take the role.
I will take the role with my speaker on. Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. Just a couple of announcements as we begin our special meeting. For those of you at home that want to follow along, we don't have anyone in the audience tonight for the special meeting, but if you'd like to follow along, you can go to the website, lavonianpublicschools.org. You can highlight over the Board tab, and on the right side you'll see Board information. And if you left-click on that down on the left, you'll see Meeting Agendas. There is one adjustment to our agenda. Item number 16, Board Members to Take M A S B Class. We're going to remove that as under the present situation, M A S B is not going to hold those classes. I'm hoping that they'll come up at a later date when we can attend, and we will deal with it at that time. Likewise, this evening, we had a very informative and somewhat lengthy committee of the whole meeting immediately before this meeting that discussed all of the items that are going to be up for a vote tonight. So you may not hear much of a discussion because we have already spent a lot of time going over those. For anyone who wants a more in-depth discussion, you can just go ahead and go to our committee of the whole meeting for this evening, and it will be on there. So you may not hear much of a discussion on the items tonight. So we will then go to Audience Communication. Again, I do not have any blue slips, and there is no one in the audience. So we will go to Item Three, Public Address and Classroom Sound Field Systems 2013. Bond, may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the District's Technology Designer Barton Mallow Company to appoint Digital Age Technologies, Inc. as the second approved contractor for the public address and classroom sound field project for a total cost not to exceed $75,000. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank. And although I will turn it over to Mr. Francis or Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith, anything to add from earlier?
Nothing more than what we discussed. Just a reminder, this is no additional cost, just approving a second vendor to complete the project.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the motion, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item Four, Bid Results for Paving Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative plant, Moran Cressa, to approve T and M asphalt paving, Milford Township, Michigan, for paving projects at Churchill High School, Jackson Early Childhood Center, Johnson Upper Elementary, and Nigie Euro Elementary in the amount of $993,300 and a contingency budget amount of $99,330 for a total amount of $1,092,630 and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Anything to add, Mr. Francis?
Just a reminder that this is a planned sinking fund project for paving in our district.
We have, any questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the bid results for paving projects. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item Five, Furniture for Franklin High School, 2013. Bond, may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of furniture for Franklin High School from Interior Environment, Novi, Michigan in the amount of $30,554.70.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Again, anything to add to this, Mr. Francis?
No, it is a purchase that was done from the bid consortium and fulfills the Board's requirements to bid.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the purchase of Franklin High School furniture, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item Six, Workspace Products for Randolph Elementary, 2013 bond. Can I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of workspace products for Randolph Elementary School from Interior Environment, Novi, Michigan in the amount of $28,662.65.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Anything to add on this one, Mr. Francis?
Similarly, it's the last. This is from the 2013 bond fund, and it is a, fulfilled the Board's requirement to bid.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the purchase of workspace products for Randolph Elementary, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, could you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to Item Seven, Core Switch Replacement, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of a core switch from Sentinel Technologies, Ann Arbor, Michigan for a cost of $45,396 plus a 10% contingency of $4,540 for a total cost of $49,936.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Anything to add, Mr. Francis?
Just a quick reminder that this is going to replace the current switch, that core switch that is eight years old, and this will be coming from the 2013 bond.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Once again, we're moving through these quickly, but they've been heavily discussed just this evening. So we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to accept the core switch replacement, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to Item Eight, Approval of Desktop Computer Replacement Purchase, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of desktop computers from CDW-G Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of $1,129,495.35.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank. Anything to add, Mr. Francis?
Yes, actually, this is, while it's listed as 2013 bond, that is true, but it's actually a combination of the 2013 bond along with the District Technology Fund. Those two funds in tandem will cover the $1,129,495.35.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of desktop computer replacement purchase for the combined 2013 bond.
Technology Fund.
And Technology.
And Technology Fund, thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Excuse me, Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item Nine, Chromebook Replacement, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Chromebooks, Chromebook cards, and services from Presidio, Inc., Wixom, Michigan for an amount not to exceed $1,600,000.
Support.
I heard my left ear. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Francis, anything to add on this?
Nothing particular, no, just from the 2013 bond. It is our first wave of replacements from that first wave that we got early on the bond.
Thank you.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Hi, Mr. Centers dropped the gavel before I could ask this. No, I actually forgot. But Chromebooks, the old ones that we still have, are they going to be still in use? Are we going to still, are we going to spread them out so more people have them? Or are we taking them back for refund, or not refund?
Fantastic question, and I'm so glad you brought it up because we did not mention it earlier. Yes, thank you. So actually, we are going to get a recycle, we are going to actually get paid dollars for each of the Chromebooks. We will not keep them. They're only going to be supported by Google. So that is one of the things that occurs with Chromebooks, and we will get dollars for each one of them. And the shape and condition that they're in currently will bring us funding for recycling them.
So that's not included in the 16?
No, no, it's not. That's beyond that. So this amount stands on its own, and that, much like what we do with the E-rate, it comes in afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the purchase of Chromebook replacement, 2013 bond. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item Ten, High School Competition Gym Scoreboards. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of competitive gym scoreboards at Churchill High School, Franklin High School, Anne Stevenson High School from Dectronics in the amount of $26,292 plus a 5% contingency in the amount of $1,318 for a total approved amount of $27,610.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Anything to add, Mr. Francis?
Just a quick reminder that we're replacing all three high schools' competition boards. While they all range in age, the youngest of which is 15 years plus, we want to keep all three of them sort of up to date, and this will be a general fund purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the purchase of high school competition gym scoreboards. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Item Eleven, Sanding and Finishing High School Gym Competition Gym Floors. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the sanding and refinishing of the competition gym floors at Churchill High School, Franklin High School, and Stevenson High School by Foster Specialty Floors, Wixom, Michigan in the amount of $96,642.42.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis?
This is an overdue project, in our opinion, and we're looking forward to it as a sinking fund project to refinish those floors.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the sanding and finishing of high school competition gym floors. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That takes us to Item Twelve, Boiler Replacements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of new boilers at Franklin High School, Riley Upper Elementary School, Roosevelt Elementary School, and Coolidge Elementary School from Cistemp Corporation, Rochester Hills, Michigan, for a cost of $1,510,000. And at Emerson Middle School from Detroit Boiler Company, Detroit, Michigan, for a cost of $245,461.85 plus 8% contingency on the total project in the amount of $140,438.15 for a total approved amount of $1,895,900.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis?
Again, just a quick reminder that this is a sinking fund project that comes from our planned projects.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, we've got two different vendors going on, and I'm assuming that as we go through and replace boilers, that we'll probably have a few other vendors depending on what the low bid is. But the consistency is going to be the same, right? It's, I think, our overall plan is to have a consistent product.
Yes, the product will be consistent. Who installs them might vary from year to year.
Very, but it'll be the same technique, and it'll, okay, everything will be the same. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Any other questions or comments?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
I will be abstaining from voting on this item because my family's company does work with some of the companies that are listed on this document.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, for the purchase and installation of new boilers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers? Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to Item Thirteen, Bus Wash Replacement. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of a new bus wash system at the Central Office Complex from Hydrochem Systems, Caledonia, Michigan, in the amount of $141,073 plus 5% contingency of $7,000 for a total approved amount of $148,073.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, and... And, Mr. Francis?
Yes, this is a replacement of a approximately 25-year-old and no longer functioning bus wash. We will find more operational, or I should say, lower operational costs in the new bus wash, and actually expand the types of vehicles that we can run through it, thus protecting our investment in both buses and maintenance vehicles, and this will be a purchase from the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the purchase of a bus wash system. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. That takes us to Item 14, D E T, D T E Conversion of Light Poles to L E D. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the conversion of various light poles on district properties to L E D by D T E Energy, Detroit, Michigan, in the amount of $69,710.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
This conversion will finish off the light poles on district properties, and it is a sinking fund project, and if I didn't mention it before, and I don't recall if I did or not, but it was in the memo, there's also rebates involved with this, which the district is pursuing around approximately $10,000 with the rebates that we can get back after the fact. So that would show as, the cost now is 69,710, but the rebates obviously would reduce that by approximately $10,000.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
And you did not include that possible rebate in the fact that it's going to take us less than 18 months to get our money back on these.
Correct.
I just, that just, I love it.
Yeah, I know, it brings it down even more. We just don't try not to use the rebate sometimes.
Because we're not sure.
It's baked into it, we'll very likely get them, but we don't have to bake them into the amounts that the Board's approved, and that type of logic.
I just like the return on investment.
And it's good for the environment, it's more efficient, all those things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the conversion of light poles to L E D. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Is it, I have it marked down that Mrs. Bradford made the motion?
I made the motion. That's okay.
All right, too many Bs, right? And Mrs. Jarvis supported, right?
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Now, Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield? It says yes? It's too late at night. President Johnson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Motion carries.
Surprise yourself.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Don't get no more smack.
Oh, my goodness.
That will take us to Item 15, Churchill High School Domestic Hot Water System Replacement. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase and installation of a new domestic hot water system at Churchill High School from Cistemp Corporation, Rochester Hills, Michigan for a cost of $38,000 plus 10% contingency in the amount of $3,800 for a total approved amount of $41,800.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis, your last item tonight.
My last item, and I'll leave you with this, and it is a sinking fund project that is quite needed because the current system at Churchill High School is running at an estimated 50% capacity right now.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the purchase and installation of a new hot water system at Churchill High School. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. And as I indicated, we are removing Item 16 from the agenda. So we are at the end of our agenda again. If you really want to see more discussion, you can go to the Committee of the Whole that we had this evening as well. You know, even though our schools are closed, there's still a lot of work to do, and therefore I'm grateful to my colleagues for getting together tonight to move forward with these items, so it's greatly appreciated, and to Mrs. Oakwood for the phenomenal job that she and her team have done this week, given the circumstances that we're under, to get us ready for these meetings in particular, and to move the district forward under these somewhat trying times, so thank you, Mrs. Oakwood.
Absolutely, I'm proud to have such a tremendous team to work with every day.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the Board tonight? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.